She's like, "You're not late, you're on time, you're fine." [laughing] Um, so that, can we have another roll call?
Dr. Genovese.
Here.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Peters.
Here.
Dr. Resnick.
Mr. Slotman.
Here.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Present.
Dr. Wilson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Awesome. Please join me in the flag. Oh, I was... Please just join me in the flag salute. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and The Trentonian on February 14th. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Um, this meeting is not being...
It is.
Oh, okay. This meeting is being videotaped for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing of Comcast Channel 19, Verizon FiOS, Channel 32, and the school district website, www.hvrrst. Um, before we do any reports and, um... And also our student update, uh, we'll go ahead and have a five-minute break for those who have been here. Huh? I know, that's... Doing it twice made me think both times. Saying blah, blah, blah.
Oh, that's a good idea. That's a... That's a good idea. And then just, yeah.
Yeah, a little bit. You? But I will. It's probably there, I just can't see it. Is that it?
I'll leave the course committee. Okay.
Blow it up again. No, I gotta get it into view. Gotta get it into regular Adobe. I can't blow it up. Make it presentable. You gotta go in View, Screen. One and a one. That was nuts. You lost it too? Yeah, looks like it. You have a sugar. Mark, I had a piece of that earlier.
You what?
I had a piece of that earlier.
Oh, man. It's on. It's on. Are you good now?
Okay. Good? Yep.
Okay, we have everyone back? Yes. Wonderful, thank you for taking Swift. Um, I would like to take a first and second to approve the minutes from the January 22nd as well as the January 29th meeting with your changes. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. So, we'd like to welcome our student representative. Angela, would you please... Right, Hannah? Sorry, Hannah.
Wrong name. Bob.
Yes. I was like Hannah? Okay. Right? Thank you.
Um, now that we are near the end of February, we are at a strong start to the third marking period. For many winter sports, we are wrapping up some very successful seasons. For starters, the wrestling team won the sectional final for the first time in Hopewell history. The boys' basketball team made it to the finals of the Mercer County Tournament, um, which happened on Saturday against the Pennington School. And additionally, the boys' and girls' swim teams both made it to the sectional semifinals for the first time in program history. Our winter musical, "How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying", is scheduled for March 1st, 2nd, 8th, and 9th in the CHS pack. Course selection and... Course selection for the next school year has also begun, and our counselors will be meeting with each student to help them finalize their choices. And finally, the physics teachers at the high school are hosting an Eclipse Day extravaganza on April 8th to watch the total solar eclipse. Um, and this will be the last visible eclipse until 2044. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Wonderful. Thank you, Hannah. I don't know why Angela's... She just... She visited us from last year on the agenda, so... But we thank you, Hannah, for your time, and of course, you know what I'm gonna say next.
Okay.
Have a wonderful evening. One time she's gonna say, I know. She's very busy. All right. I am going to pass on a president's report. Do you have anything, Dr. Trese?
I just wanna add a few words about the total eclipse. I have gotten a few inquiries because I know some districts are going to a half-day or closing for the day for the eclipse. We will not be doing that, parents. I know that you don't need another babysitting day. But we will be providing glasses to all of the kids. We're working on... Dr. Plitzes is working with the teachers to purchase those, and we will have some learning experiences around that. But like back in the Stone Ages when we were kids, you're gonna go to school, put your little glasses on, and see the eclipse. All right. Okay, with that, I'm gonna... For the... In the interest of time, because we are going through a lot today in this agenda, so I'm gonna pass this back to you.
Thank you. So... All right, we're going to move on to a presentation... Brief presentation on the calendars and... Voting as a board on passing those calendars. We're just waiting on the technology to my left. Look at that. All right, so, um... Just a summary of the, uh, the district calendar. So, uh, the calendar committee consisted of 20 members. There were eight parents that were representatives from each school's PTO, uh, including the STRIVE, which is our special education PTO, our PEACH, our preschool program, and the Single Parents Group. We had five administrators who represented each of the levels, elementary, secondary, and the entire district, and seven staff members represented each school building. Just the timeline of the calendar survey. In October, it was sent out to all families, students in grades six through 12, so that they had a voice as well, and our staff. The survey included open-ended opportunities to share ideas and comments. Uh, November and December is when the district committee meet... Met to review the data and the draft calendars. Uh, December was a survey to both the Teachers Association and the Support Professionals Association regarding changes in professional development time, which we'll talk about in just a few minutes. And then in January, a sidebar agreement was drafted with each of those associations, and the calendars were submitted for board approval last month. One thing I will say about the calendar committee, it was a very, very thoughtful group of individuals that represented backgrounds, connections to the community, more than just PTO parents, or more than just, um... They had a lot of different programs that they were associated with in the community. They read through every single one of the survey responses. They presented all sides in the discussion. Some of the arguments, I wouldn't even say that. Some of the discussions did get heated. However, they worked very collaboratively towards decisions. So I will say it was a pleasure to work with that committee. So these were the decisions that the committee needed to make. Uh, placement of spring break, whether to add an additional holiday, when to begin school, if you're Labor Day, depending on the calendar, the early dismissal days, where they should be placed, placement of e-learning or emergency days. I will say, just as a note, the calendar committee was not tasked with deciding if we had e-learning days, just where their placement was on the calendar. That decision is a board decision and part of board policy. Um, and then also event descriptions, which I'll share in just a few minutes. Some of the non-negotiables, just so everyone's aware, there are 182 days of instruction that is inclusive of the two e-learning days. There are 185 working days for staff. The early dismissal day before Thanksgiving and the one before winter break are contractual, as is the two full days for the NJEA convention and the day after Thanksgiving. So those were things that we could not touch. Those are part of contracts. One other note, four hours does make a full day in the mind of the state for school attendance. Yes. Yes, 185 is contractual for staff, for teaching staff. So part of the discussions on the beginning and the end of the school year. Based on the survey data, it showed that ending late was a concern for the respondents. So things like camps, work, trips, military requirements, those were all things that were a concern for respondents. The comments also showed a concern for starting school two days after Labor Day. So that was interesting, that we have Labor Day weekend, and then typically, professional development occurs on those first two days for staff. Parents commented on those surveys, uh, well, what am I supposed to do with my children for those two days? Uh, the Juneteenth holiday, something that recently was added to the calendar through the federal government and the state government. Um, we know that where it falls at the end of the year does have a break in instruction. Oftentimes, it's right around exams. We discussed the fact that there is the option to follow the federal guideline of observing on June 19th, or the state guidelines of following the third Friday in June. Uh, we talked about the contractual ramifications for starting staff before Labor Day, because things would need to be done contractually for that. Um, and then also the importance of setting a concrete date for graduation planning purposes. We know that when you're having a senior, you're trying to bring family in, that graduation date, if it keeps moving, can cause a lot of problems. So here you'll see the district survey results. I don't know why there's a block right there. Thank you very much. Um, so for the question about when Labor Day falls late, would you support the school year starting before Labor Day? Forty-nine percent of parents, caretakers, or guardians strongly agreed or agreed. Students and staff were also in agreement of that. And in ending late, if the school year ended late, potentially June 27th, how concerned were you? Respondents, 62% of parents, caregivers, and guardians were concerned. Seventy-seven, of course, percent of students, which we would expect, and 85% of staff, also not... Not a surprise there. So based on that, the committee decision, after a lot of thoughtful conversation, they said schools should begin before Labor Day whenever possible to reduce extending the school year into the last week of June. Depending on when the last day of school occurred, Juneteenth should be observed either on, um, June 19th or the third Friday in June to prevent... To provide less instructional interruption for those last few days. And I think everyone was in agreement very easily that the school year should end as early as possible. So, those were those discussions. Next, the committee talked about the holidays to observe. So there are holidays that are required by the state or the federal government, and how historically they have been observed in Hopewell. Veterans Day is observed on the Friday of the NJEA convention. Columbus Day, or Indigenous Peoples' Day, has been a professional development... Professional Development Day for staff. And Good Friday has not necessarily been linked to spring break. We'll talk about that more in just a few minutes. The religious holidays that were observed by the district, Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah, Good Friday, Lunar New Year, and Diwali. And the question for the committee was, do we include Eid? Here you'll see the upcoming religious holiday dates. So, um, what has not happened in the last three calendar series did happen, as you see in the dates coming up. For the '24-'25 and '25-'26 school year, all of those days in bold, those are religious holidays that we have previously observed that fall during the school week. '26-'27 is a little bit more what we've experienced the last several years, where only three or four happen to be during the school... School week. So that was something that needed to be taken into consideration, because that would push the school year later into the summer, into June. So as I said, there was a lot of discussion on a lot of these points. Um, so observing another holiday adds a day to the school calendar. The committee looked at where it would fall in each of those calendar years, what the impact on instruction would be, what other holidays might need to be included in the future, what that impact would be. Dr. Trese was meeting with the DEI committee, and so she was in consultation with them about the holiday. Yes, sorry, just that holiday specifically. Um, reflection on past district climate surveys, those comments were shared in the discussion. Um, we tried to find out how many families actually observed Eid. That's not part of the registration process, so we couldn't find an exact number. But I will say that based on the survey comments, there were a lot of comments from family members and students, both, who said they were interested in representing and celebrating their culture, and the fact that they were not showing that on the calendar was something that they noted. So on the next slide, you'll see the committee did make that decision to include Eid in the calendar. This was similar to when Diwali and Lunar New Year were included in the calendar. That committee was following the commitment by the board to identify and address areas of equity. So the goal was to create a more culturally sensitive school community, and which would be reflected by adding in that holiday. Early dismissal days. So the discussion included the fact that professional development and conference days are why half-days are on the calendar. They are needed throughout the year for building district initiatives and ongoing training for staff. Three early dismissal days throughout the year have been used. They still count towards student attendance. So if you remember earlier, I said four hours equals one day for state attendance. That's what an early dismissal provides. Previous calendar committees have said, don't put them all on the same day of the week. That affects elementary specials. Staff have two full days of professional development before school to prepare for the school year. They have one full day in October, so those other days are usually scattered in the later months, um, January, February, March, things like that, into April and May. Conference days. These have previously been scheduled on the early dismissal days prior to Thanksgiving. Recently, the district moved to a combination of both in-person and online conferences to accommodate families. Historically, there's been one evening and two days of conferences, and there would be contractual issues if that format was trying to change. We would have to go with the associations, and I don't know that they would be so willing for that type of sidebar agreement. Um, and survey feedback, you'll see in a few minutes, indicated that parents did... I'm sorry. Survey feedback indicated that parents were appreciative of both having a morning option and an afternoon option. So that came up several times in the survey comments. So as part of the discussion comments for the committee, um, you'll see that the survey data showed these, uh, these early dismissal days were not of a concern to most respondents. Several years ago, we moved to trimesters at the elementary, and part of that discussion, I was not a part of that at the time, but part of that discussion was that the timing for conferences should be adjusted, because when the trimester ends and when the conferences were occurring was not optimal. They wanted to move that up so that parents would have more interaction with the teaching staff before, you know, towards the midway part of that trimester. There was discussion about, leading up to the Thanksgiving holiday, how that's such a stressful and busy time for families in our community as well as staff, when you're trying to have staff... Family members come into town, you're preparing for the holiday, and then you also have conferences on top of that. We all know that there's no school November. That is the, uh, the phrase that many people use. Um, and NJEA convention came up as a topic. So it's already a shortened week. Maybe that's a better fit for the trimesters, which the elementary staff provided that feedback. If conferences were moved to the NJEA convention week, that would provide two full weeks of instruction in November. So it wouldn't have that breakup, which if you think of the calendar, there was always a Friday in there, and you'd get a week, a week and a half of full instruction. Um, and then the discussion of, all right, if conferences were moved up, what would that do to the TMS and CHS report periods? And it actually was a good time, because now parents can meet with teachers before the end of the marking period. Typically, conferences start on that, the day that report cards are released. One thing to note, if you made conference days full days, uh, so students were not in school on those days, that would add to the calendar, and students would have to make up those days at some other time, pushing the school year out, which we know was not something that survey respondents wanted. In addition, uh, there was discussion that the YMCA offers childcare on early release days, and that the STRIVE PTO is actively looking into options as well to provide childcare options. It's important to note additional information that when looking at other school districts, those in Mercer County and the majority of the state, they all utilize early dismissal days for conferences or professional development. So here's a list of all of the other schools in Mercer County, the district, and the total number of early dismissals that they have on their calendar. Hopewell has the least, with 10 days. Here's the district survey data. You can see that 60% of respondents of parents, guardians, and caretakers were not concerned at all. Obviously, students and staff members would not have an issue with that. Staff have to work anyway, students enjoy it, but 60% of the respondents of, uh, parents did not... Were not concerned with those days. So the committee decisions were to move conference days to the week of the NJEA convention and ensure that those early dismissals are on different days of the week, which you will see are on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Then there was a discussion on spring break. So survey results were mixed on when to schedule. This was a big deal. Previous calendar committees decided specifically not to always link spring break to the Easter Passover holiday. This was based on years of feedback from the community. People said this was showing favoritism to one holiday over another. That was not something they wanted to do. There hadn't been issues in the previous years, because this had changed. Almost 12 years ago, the calendar was changed, so spring break fell the last week of March, beginning of April, that first week. They were afraid changing that so that it was attached to a holiday would go backwards. Other school districts all scheduled their breaks at different times. This causes hardships for, uh, families with children or parents who work in other districts. These were all the conversations that took place. Substitutes, if our staff members have children in school districts with different breaks, those were conversations. We looked at the number of days off, depending on where that spring break fell, um, thinking of the concerns of the survey results not ending too late. Um, we talked with the athletic director if there was an impact on athletics. It was around the same time, and we just found this interesting. The Hamilton School District sent out a survey to their families, getting feedback on when they wanted spring break, and they actually put the first week of April as an option to get interest, because that's something that we do. So it's interesting to note other districts are looking at us. And then overall, they... The... It was a very, very long discussion, a lot of conversation. Where did the holidays fall? Keeping an eye on which ones would add to the end of the year. So if you look on the next slide, you'll see the district survey data. So while 39% of parents, caretakers, and guardians wanted it tied to the holiday, 61% wanted a consistent week not tied to that holiday. So that was something the district found interesting. It wasn't specific on which of the weeks it should be falling, but it was not tied to the holiday. We found it very interesting that 44% of students wanted to keep it the way it's been scheduled, um, and 70% overall wanted it not tied to Easter. It was the staff that was a little bit more even. They wanted, uh, 50% did want it tied to the holiday. So that was something that was part of the discussion. So based on, uh, a lot of conversation with the committee, they decided to continue scheduling spring break for the end of March, first week of April. You'll see on the calendars during the '24-'25 school year, it's actually connected with the Eid holiday. For the '25-'26 year, it connects with Good Friday, and with '26-'27, it falls after Good Friday. The additional items that were discussed was the language. So in previous calendars, they've said snow days. Recent years, we've had flooding, we've had rain, we've had all sorts of other issues, and so the conversation switched of changing from snow days to emergency closing dates. As directed by the board last year, days for the e-learning were put on the calendar. In the past, they have not been actually listed on the calendar, but last year that was a directive. So those days were noted around the Memorial Day weekend and around near spring break. And then those sidebar agreements just, um... Surveys were sent to staff so that they would also have a voice in saying, all right, if we move them things around, professional development would fall before Labor Day. Staff overwhelmingly voted to start their PD before Labor Day in order to end the year before the Juneteenth holiday. Um, that was a large percentage. So I have each of the calendars listed here. Um, as I said, for the '24-'25 year, spring break Eid is March 31st. That starts your spring break. E-learning is added to the Easter weekend for that Easter Monday. That was something the board had suggested last year. Um, and you'll see Juneteenth is after the last day of school. For the next year, the '25-'26, Good Friday's on April 3rd. Spring break leads into the holiday. The e-learning is on, um, Easter Monday. I put that in quotes. And then, uh, Juneteenth is after the last day of school. And for the '26-'27 school year, Eid is early, so it wasn't tied to that. Uh, Easter's also early that year. Spring break follows, so it's, uh, the week of the 29th. And Juneteenth is after school ends. So, it's the week of the 29th, and Juneteenth is after school ends. That was the summary of the Calendar Committee. What questions do you have?
So, I want to thank you for doing this very detailed presentation. Last meeting, when you showed the calendars and the results, I had a lot of questions. I think this answered all of them, so I can't think of a question right now. I may in a few minutes, but I did want to thank you because it did answer the questions that I had last.
Thank you.
I also was another one of the board members that voted to table discussions this week. As a new member, I was unfamiliar with clearly the very intentional and meticulous process that goes into creating these calendars. So, I want to thank you, and I also want to thank all of the Calendar Committee folks, the staff, the students that helped out with the surveys, the parents that helped, and the administrators. I mean, I also really do want to just touch on the notion of religious equity, that we're being very proactive by including Eid in our calendars. And as a former student who helped fight for Diwali and Lunar New Year to be included in our calendars, I can attest to how meaningful and significant it is for our Muslim students to feel recognized and to feel heard in our calendars. So, I just want to give my, you know, give my props and thank you for all the work, and I look forward to voting yes on the calendar.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. It's a curiosity question. It's not our district, but it was bugging me, so I'm going to ask. I saw one of the districts has 20 early dismissal days. Is there a limit that the state imposes on districts taking advantage of that? Because it is, you know, it may count as a full day when it's four hours, but it's not.
I'm not aware that there's a limit on what it's -- I'm not aware of any limit that the state puts on.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, we're going to, we'll approve it later. I just got that from the secretary. We're going to move on to the referendum discussion.
Good evening, everyone, again. George Dothe, HVAC Architects. Nice to see everyone again. We're going to touch base again on the presentation that I think we've shown already in different iterations, past meetings, with Bob's help over there. And so, what are we going to talk about tonight? Well, we'll give an update on the referendum and tell you where we are today. Where we are today. Refresh on the overview and the process, the projects and the priorities and the costs with a summary, overall costs, expected tax impact, and moving forward and what are the next steps, and the steps we've completed already since the last time we've gotten together, Bob. So, where are we today? So, referendum is planned for September of 2024, and I know some of this information is repeated. The referendum was originally presented at the November 2023 Board of Education meeting. Some of you may recall, the last referendum that the district did was in 2015. But there were things that were not addressed in that referendum, and there are some needs that have arisen since, and we'll talk about that. The state of New Jersey is going to contribute to the cost of eligible projects, as they did in the last referendum and the ones before that. And this presentation is going to talk about the planned projects, the costs. It's going to talk a little bit about the DOE process, a process that we've started putting together paperwork for the Department of Education and also the district's long-range facilities plan, which is the planning tool that the district is mandated to use in New Jersey. Okay? Updates and applications underway, Bob?
Actually, the long-range plan was approved today.
Oh, we received approval? Oh, excellent. Okay, good. I haven't even seen that yet. There you go.
Got a nice message from Susan Cutner today.
Oh, great. Very good. Good to know. All right. So, project categories. Building integrity. What are those? Mostly roofing. We still have roofs that need to be addressed, warranties that are expiring, that weren't expiring in 2015, but we knew those roofs were going to have to be done, but wanted to get the full warranty out of them. Indoor environmental improvements and HVAC projects. These are ventilation projects and cooling and things like that we'll talk about. Safety and security, interior doors. The Stony Brook Fire Alarm System actually is being done right now as a separate project, will not be in the referendum, and the electrical service at Tollgate Elementary School. Space for students. We're going to talk a little bit about that as we plan for increased enrollments, expansion of pre-K, and service to some of our special needs children, and site improvements, and we'll talk about what those are. So, those are the main categories, the five main categories of projects. So, why? Projects, again, not done in the last referendum, current needs that have been identified by the district administration and by the facilities professionals, the folks who work here in the district, larger projects that are too expensive to fund without a referendum. The state will contribute to the cost, as we talked about earlier. Delaying the projects could potentially result in costly failures and ongoing maintenance issues. We're going to get the students out of the modular buildings at Bear Tavern School, improve services for children with disabilities, and again, as we said, pre-K and K expansion based upon enrollments, and other improvements to benefit the children of Hope Valley.
Again, I just wanted to take this time. Tom, we talked about where delaying the projects could result in a failure to a system. Tom, can you just talk a little bit about what happened at Hopewell and why this is urgent right now?
Yeah, sure. When we meet with Finance and Facilities every month, we go over all the different things that we're seeing and what are happening. And as we were planning on boiler replacements, we knew we couldn't afford everything all at once. So, we were pushing back what we thought would last and hold off another year or another two years. And we caught the very edge, as close as you could catch it on Hopewell Elementary. Last winter, it happened to be generally mild, except for a couple of days, and those couple of days were days that school was closed. We had no heat on the upper floor of that building on those days because we were down to one and a half boilers that were operational, and it was not able to generate enough steam pressure to heat the building. So, when we kick these projects down the road, it's very, very risky and to the point of risking closing a school.
And that's kind of where we are now. It's not every project, but there are a good majority of these projects that we're getting right down to the end of the physical life of these projects.
And if I could just add, when something fails like that, it's not like you go out and fly across the country and you're like, "Oh, somebody's HVAC system and boiler, we need to wait like here to get them in." So, it's not something that you can say, "Oh, we can now, we might want to..."
Yeah, that's actually a good point. We're still waiting for the chiller, right?
Yes, the chiller was ordered in March, and it's still not here.
Right. Okay. I mean, so, yes, that's a good point. So, the projects, Tom, George talked about the cost of, he asked about the cost of waiting. The last referendum, we had about $60 million worth of projects that we had identified to doing. The board agreed to go ahead with $35 million, you know, leaving that $25 million worth of projects that were still necessary to be done, but we felt we could push them off. But the cost of those projects, at this point, has probably doubled since 2015. So, the cost of, you're saying was, "Why are we going out for such a high number, $87 million?" The reason is because if we delayed any further, the chances of those projects going up in cost escalate at that point. So, getting them done now can bring savings long-term.
I was going to say this later, but since we're on the topic, I'll say this now. When we first identified in the Finance and Facilities Committee, and it's been a while now, that we really had no choice but to go to a referendum. I felt, and I think other members of the committee felt as well, but they can speak for themselves, but I certainly felt that it would be a worst possible disservice for the district community to go to a substantial referendum, to ask for a lot of money and still face a significant risk of having to close our schools down because of a significant facilities issue, be it an HVAC issue or well issue, right? And so, I was someone who asked Bob and Tom, I said, "You know, since we have to go down this route anyway, let's get a comprehensive list of things that you believe are likely to fail, and also when they fail, right, this will impact our education because we're going to have classrooms that are unusable or we're seeing schools that are unusable, right, and get those in there." And that's really the core of this referendum, like stuff that needs to be built because of demographic projections and stuff that needs to be done so that we can continue to use our buildings.
Yeah. Yeah, we did come in with a lower number originally to the Finance Facilities Committee, and we were tasked with going back out and identifying all of the projects that were of a height.
Yeah, so, this was, you're right. This was a case where you originally came in with a lower number, and at least, I don't want to say the board, but the Finance and Facility Committee at the time challenged you with coming back to the bigger number.
Well, I think we appreciate that. It wasn't hard for the team to go and do that list. We were tracking that list and we were reporting out on it, but you can kind of play in and ignore the reading and not addressing it, and we've got ourselves in a situation now.
And I am cheap. So, I feel the pain of this referendum, but I've also owned homes for 20 years. I know the cost of when you let something like that go, it's going to hit you, and it's just going to cost you a lot more. And the scope, when you're talking about a school building, is much bigger than it is for a house.
So, I guess the question that arises, you know, for the board questioned this too at one time, is why weren't we doing these projects on an ongoing basis? And the answer is, we were. We've been trying to repair things, and we'll show a list in a second of the things that we've done. It's just that the cost of these projects prohibit them from being included in the general fund budget without taking monies away from the educational program. It'll take us to here, and these are just a sampling of the projects that Tom and his crew have done. On the right side, projects that were completed by our district staff and then other projects that we've done through capital reserve monies. Okay? So, moving on.
Yep. Significant, those are significant projects. I think that's costed $10 million that the district has managed to do in house over time. But again, there's more to be done. So, the projects, the priorities, and the preliminary costs, and let's go and let's just take a look at what they are, broken out by category. Here's what they look like. Building integrity, just over $2.5 million. Indoor environmental improvements, HVACs, over $6 million. Safety and security projects. There are not many of those at Central High School. I'm sorry, this is Central High School. We did a lot of that at the Central High School with the last referendum, okay? Same thing with space for students, last referendum at the high school. So, we're not going to be doing that in this referendum, not really necessary, and some site improvements, just about $2.1 million, just over $10.6 million at the high school. So, here are some of the projects I think we discussed. Just to give you an idea, these are the roofing projects, indoor environmental improvements at the 400 wing of the building, which is the science area, site improvements at the stadium complex, ADA improvements. We talked about accessible restrooms and concession stand at the stadium complex.
Okay. Something interesting to point out, that the roofing that's being done in the left, the right side of the slide are the PAC and the new gym, what was called the new gym. Those facilities were new when I got here 22 years ago, and now they are getting close to the end of, useful, end of the useful life of those roofs.
And if, I could just say real quickly, you had on there the 400 hall and HVAC there. Every winter, we struggle with that, and for about two weeks this winter, we had little or no heat in, for the classrooms because the units keep breaking, and we had to keep repairing them, and we were able to get them up and running briefly, and then they just fail again, so.
Right. And I believe that wing was added in the '90s, which at the time, when I, again, when I got here, was relatively new. 22 years down the road, this is, again, an older portion of that building now.
So, here's Timberlane Middle School. Again, building integrity, just over $4 million, primarily roofing, HVAC, indoor air quality improvements, environmental improvements, just over $14 million. That's a substantial portion of the classrooms in the building that are being done. Safety and security projects, very small number, relatively $156,000. Space for students, about $1.5 million, and we'll look at the details on that. And site improvements, including two synthetic turf fields at the AFT complex, just about $6.8 million, for about 26, just almost $26.7 million at Timberlane. Okay? So, here's what those projects look like. Again, building integrity, roofing, you can see the areas affected there on the little map. Indoor air quality improvements, environmental improvements, HVAC equipment, and that'll be, again, primarily in the A and B areas where the classrooms are. Chiller replacement, adding air conditioning to the aux gym, which Tom, I think is the only gym that doesn't have air conditioning in the district now, yes?
It's the only space in the district that don't have air.
Only space. That's not air conditioned. There you go. Thank you. Right. Renovations at the aux gym, and again, some site improvements. We talked about those fields as well as improving the front entrance to Timberlane.
Talk a little about the front entrance, Tom.
Yeah, the, over the years, the front entrance has deteriorated quite a bit. There's really no place for anyone to stand without getting wet in the rain, so it, although it doesn't need to be as large as it was originally, be able to cut that back and at least put a covering over some of it, so when people are standing there waiting to get in in the rain, they're not getting that wet. And the sidewalk and the paver area is in really bad shape. It's a huge tripping hazard. And again, as we look at these things and we start putting them together in Finance and Facilities, they all start to add up. And what happens is, you get numbers going out three or four years that are $10 million, $12 million, and you know there's no way we're going to have that. We've been running around $1.5 to $2 million in capital projects.
And again, something that we've discussed for the past several Finance Facilities Committee meetings in the last two referendums, discussions in public, we've talked about the addition of a secondary synthetic turf field process, and I wanted to ask our athletic director, Trip Becker, to talk a little bit about the request for this type of facility at AFT.
Yeah, so, our turf field is great. It's unbelievable. All the teams love it, but there are some issues because we overuse it. It's used every single day, whether it's for games or practices. And once the season gets started, there are pretty much games every day on our turf. So, we send a lot of our teams in the fall and the spring over to Twin Pines. Twin Pines has been great. The township's been great with us using it, but there are some drawbacks to that. One is transportation. Our transportation is taxed, to say the least, and they have a tough time getting our teams over there every day. When they do get them over there, they're often, you know, late, not because of their falls, they have runs, but our teams do not get over there probably until 3:30, quarter or four, and they're picked up at 5 o'clock. So, that cuts in on their practice times. Over there, we do not have a trainer. We don't have to have a trainer on-site for practices, but we do have to have a trainer on-site for games. So, we cannot play any games over there. So, the only thing we can use Twin Pines for is for practices. Over there, they are dropped off, and the bus will come back and pick them up after their run at the elementary school. If there are any weather issues, any emergencies, they have to run very quickly over to Stony, or Stony Brook, and that's where they have to take shelter. So, all these things, and they also do sometimes, from time to time, getting to some arguments with people who aren't supposed to be there using the field. So, that causes another issue. So, all these things go into some of the reasons why we would like to get a second turf field. A lot of schools are getting second turf fields. A lot of school already has second turf fields going to third. So, it makes sense to keep everybody on-site. It's safer. It's easier on transportation. It's safer, it's easier on transportation. And as far as the turf field, you know, everybody wants to play on turf. It's, you know, you can play on turf every single day. Weather does not impact the field like it does if you're playing on grass. You know, grass is great to play on, but grass is only great if the weather's great, and the weather has been great. If it's been too hot, the grass is dried out, and you're playing on, you know, dead grass and dirt. If it's raining a lot, there's puddles all over the field and you really can't play on it or you'll tear it up more. So a lot of our sub varsity games are canceled because they cannot play on the grass fields. Our varsity baseball and varsity softball games have a lot of games canceled because their fields, you know, if it rains, it can be not playable for two, three days, depending on the amount of rain that we get. So in the proposal that we have for the possible new turf field, we do have baseball and softball in there, as well as every other sport. So all the sports that we affected would be football, boys soccer, girls soccer, field hockey, boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse, baseball and softball. And this is all levels, and not only at the high school, but the middle school too.
I know at one point we had talked about just the cost of maintaining turf field versus the grass, and I think that's an important discussion for the larger board, you know, that it would seem like one's more expensive, but.
Yeah, there is, there is maintenance involved in the turf field. We get our turf field at the stadium groomed twice a year, once in the fall, once in the spring, but that's it. And then our grounds crew will groom it every couple of weeks as well. So there is maintenance to a turf field. Some people believe that once you put the turf field down, that's it, and it's not. You take care of it and it lasts longer, just like anything. But in regards to a grass field, the grass fields need to be cut. And in the spring, they are cut several times a week because they need to keep up with it. Those fields need to be lined multiple times, and you also need to seed the fields and fertilize them. So there's a lot of cost involved in our grass fields. So I don't know if you want to talk about it anymore, but.
Yeah, the, the grass fields actually cost quite a bit to take care of because of the constant mowing, seeding. If you get any kind of weed infestation, then you have to follow IPM and take care of that. If the weather dries out, you a lot of times lose the turf, and then you can really only seed in the late fall, and if the weather's not cooperative then, it just doesn't take well. So turf is less care than natural grasses.
A lot of the savings that we're going to find with the grass, the turf field versus the grass is the ability to redistribute our grounds guys into other things besides lining and cutting grass on fields. The other thing that was asked, and I'm going to jump back to Trip for you this, at the Finance Facilities Committee, we wanted to know is total down days. What were the total down days that we talked about?
So I sent that, you have that, you get it? No, I don't have it, I didn't bring my computer. But I went back, I was able to go back to 2018, 19 for the high school, and I believe 2020 for the middle school. And Bob has the exact numbers, I can share them as well. But the number of cancellations, and again, depends on the season. Typically, your spring season has more cancellations because of the amount of rain you get in the spring, and also baseball and softball being canceled. So between the high school and middle school games, like I said, if it rains, it can destroy that field for two, three days, depending on how much rain we get. So there are a lot more cancellations in the spring than there are in the fall. But there were quite a bit if.
So it looks like it averages anywhere between 20 and 30 events lost per season.
And when you say events, is that practices, end games, or is that games?
It's games.
That's just all games. I can't, I don't have.
Twenty to 30 games per season. And Trip, one more thing that we touched on and necessarily go deeply into, the condition itself of those grass fields. What conditions are they in to project our couple of years? The conditions, yeah?
You know, our grounds, our grounds crew does a great job maintaining it, but it takes a lot of work to make sure you maintain that. Those fields back there are wide open, and a lot of times, there are people that will go on there and hit golf balls and put divots in them. You know, their dogs are on there tearing it up. So they do a nice job keeping up with it, and we do a nice job making sure that we don't put teams on there playing games and destroying them. But it comes at a cost of those games get canceled, and sometimes they don't get made up because of the short season. So, you know, the fields are great, but, you know, we do shut certain fields down each season so that they can come back. The one JV soccer field, we shut down in the spring to allow it to come back for the fall. But, you know, we don't have the ability with all those fields, so some fields take more of a beating than others.
We also don't have the ability to, and Trip and I, we were, we were having a little debate last spring over watering of the fields. We don't really have the ability to effectively water. There are tanks that were placed out there that could be filled from the well. We do have a well, but the amount of water, and we got into a turf management company talked to us about it, that the amount of water that we needed to water those fields appropriately instead of start, so you can underwater a field and actually kill it if you water it not enough. You put some water but not enough, you can actually kill it. We don't have the actual capability to water the fields to the level that they would need to be sustained.
So could we get, just so that we can make an informed decision, what is in the referendum for the fields? And then also, what would be the change to our yearly budget to upkeep the difference?
It's, well, we could, we could throw something together. I'm not going to ever argue that the cost of the savings and what we're going to save in grounds is going to pay for the field, it's not going to.
No, no, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking what, what's the hit on our budget? So there's, there's the referendum will pay for these fields, but then there's the ongoing maintenance of two new turf fields, and what is the difference in cost between what we have now and the turf fields is what? Because we're talking about, we're coming up on years where we're going to have to make some tough decisions. And so it'd be nice to know what we're adding to a budget that might already be challenging.
I don't think we're going to add anything. It's going to, it's going to free up the, we're not going to be adding any grounds crews, we're going to be redistributing those guys. We have four groundsmen, and those four grounds are the ones who take to the field. So they're going to have less time worrying about taking care of a field and more time to attack tree removals and other grounds tasks. So I don't know that there's going to be an increase in cost or a decrease in cost, it's going to be flat. If I'm, yeah.
So it's going to be a completely reallocated cost for us. We're not going to see any increase in our budget.
I don't see us adding, not in labor costs, we're going to get.
Total, I want total costs.
Yeah, I was just talking about, like, for example, we just had replacing a high school field. She's saying, like, if you had to do something drastic with that field, it's the difference. I don't know what you're saying to that.
I mean, there's yearly upkeep.
Where it has to be replaced.
Yeah, and there's, yeah, I mean, we know in 10 years, it's going to happen.
It's the maintenance of the cutting and the painting, the line and all of that compared to, you know, the few times that required to be maintained. And it's not about looking at the savings per se, but it is about looking at, you know, if we're going to, we're talking about where can we pull some money, even if it's $100,000, that's important to know if there's a program out there that costs $150,000, right? Like, so I'd rather, you'd rather keep the program, take the field and be able to keep that $100,000 still in the budget. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and again, I think I'm going to, I'm almost going to reiterate that the cost is in the labor, and we're not going to reduce the grounds because there's so much work that they're not getting to that they're going to be able to do instead of not, instead of pushing stuff off.
Right, but I think what was said was the line, the painting of the lines and cutting around is expensive. So if it's expensive, then how much are we going to save there and be able to move it to where else? I mean, like, again, it might be cutting, slicing hairs, but I think that's a relevant question.
Yeah, I can put something together for that, but basically, the cost of fertilization, overseeding and treatment of the turf, you know, of natural grass, will far, that in itself will far exceed any grooming or anything that has to be done to the artificial turf, let alone the manpower and hours that are saved.
Totally get that. So where are we going to leave that money around?
Like, I understand the question is, but Tom's budget, as we said during the budget presentation, he's been held flat for 10 years. So the savings that is going to come from the turf is going to go back to Tom to do the things that he hasn't been able to do in-house. So I don't, I'm not sure if I'm not explaining it correctly, there's, there's not, we're not going to reduce the budget by $100,000 because we're going to do this. We're going to be able to do more of the things that he keeps telling me he can't do because either without the time or the money to do it. He wants to do some more tree removals back behind the high school and by Timberlane, but he doesn't have the budget to do it. This frees up some of that money so he can do those kinds of things.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, like, we won't see an increased budget line to care for these turf fields? Like, we don't have to hire out to do anything to them?
No, the field comes with a, the field comes with a, what is it, twice a year grooming?
And for how many years until we see, like, this year when we approve the big, like, million dollar almost to redo it? So how long are these?
Like 15 years.
Like 15 years, okay.
Did you have?
I was just going to say, it's not, to groom the field, it's $1,000. To just groom the field and get it done twice a year, that's it. That's the only upkeep we do. And then the in-house grooming that we do is our guys, there's no cost besides our labor. And we already have the machine to do it.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, no, no.
Hi. Just two, quick things really. Turf, obviously, I understand how folks want to play on it, I just would hope they wouldn't use, you know, like, the Giants turf, where there seems to be a lot of knee injuries. So if there's that discussion as, as part of that, obviously. But the second thing I was asking, will there be an opportunity for, you know, the local sports organizations like the Hobo Valley Soccer and Baseball and all those folks? Will there be opportunities for those sort of, that's far down the line, I understand that?
They use the current turf field now, but, but, like I said earlier, outside groups, no. We're not really interested in opening up to.
Right, no, 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 I'm talking about the local, you know, the groups that all of our kids participate in. That's a yes, okay, thank you.
The volume, you can't open it up to anybody, this is where our, the mic is going to be very quickly, but we do let our vocal. Good, that good.
This is on, maybe? So you mentioned the 20 to 30 games lost per season, and that's not including practices as well. And one of the things that we talked about in our committee meeting is the impact of climate change, and so we could potentially expect that number to go up. Would you anticipate that just having this additional turf field would offset this completely or just take care of sort of a portion of it?
I think it would take care of a good portion of it. Because again, you know, if we have our stadium turf field and then this turf field, it could be used for games, and then there will be space for practices. So that will help offset, but it won't completely, you know, get rid of it all. On a given day, there can be, you know, between the high school and middle school and all the levels, multiple games. I mean, 10, 12, depending on the day. So to, you know, unless we had 10 or 12 turf fields, no, it's not going to completely get rid of it, but it will help, it will help a lot.
What it's going to do is, if you get rain, like, say you get significant rain all day, and it breaks up around 2 o'clock, well, a baseball game is probably going to be lost to that, but you could play the baseball game on the turf field that afternoon, so that it would save that kind of, especially early in the season when, you know, you're trying to get on a baseball field in March is near impossible because it's just muddy and wet.
You know, another savings with time, labor and material is getting our baseball fields and softball fields ready after a large rain. So, you know, if it rained today, we're canceled. But tomorrow, you know, the infield's are going to be, you know, very soft. So our guys spend most of the day trying to get those fields ready so at least the varsity teams can play that day, so that game's not lost. So there's a lot of time, labor and material that go into getting that field ready to play. So that would be a savings by able to go to the turf field.
How often do we lose more than one day on the grass field after a rain? And do we ever lose more than one day on the turf?
The turf? No. No, we, unless it's thunder and lightning, we play.
Okay.
I have played in monsoons. I think your daughter played in.
In the field hockey game?
Yeah, it was, it was pouring, but everything else was canceled, but we played. So no, unless it's thunder and lightning, we're playing.
Well, what about the grass? Do we just lose the day that it rains, or have we lost days even after?
We have lost multiple before, depends on the amount of rain. And it also depends, some fields are better than others. Some fields will, you know, back there will drain better than others. So it might just be a day, but some other fields will be two days.
Mowing situation where the ground is too soft to get the mower on it, but you need to cut it to have it at the proper height for the kids to play on the field.
So there's two fields, one and two, and then it'll be the infield, adjacent infield. That's essentially what the project includes as it stands right now. We have a little bit of water shed, there's some water sheds back there that we have to look at a little bit, but that's what the project is shaping up to be right now. We still have a little more prep work to do on that, so Bob.
And I think the nice part about this is that multiple teams can practice at the same time.
Yes, yes, yeah. And rainstorms are getting worse now, folks, so, and we're getting more and more water when it rains, especially in very short periods of time. So anyway, moving on to Bear Tavern Elementary School. So here again, projects by category, building integrity, about 3.1, over 3.1 million, just over. Indoor environmental improvements, HVAC, 3.15 again. Safety and security, $380,000. Space for students here, and of course, we all remember this is one of the schools proposed to receive in addition, $17.1 million. And site improvements at about $845,000 for a total of almost $24.7 million at Bear Tavern. The projects here, again, you can see bottom right, you can see the roofing areas that are proposed, the storefronts, we talked about, the breezeways along the front of the building, replacing all of those at their end of life and deteriorated near the bottoms. We're going to preserve the modular buildings for offices, as we discussed, we're going to move the kids. We have a 10 classroom addition proposed. There's going to be some other miscellaneous renovations for the cafeteria and other areas. We're going to have some gender neutral toilet rooms, as we discussed, and some other things like exterior doors, interior doors, sewer pumping station renovations just to create better serviceability there, some duplication redundancies within the well systems, and a staff entrance walkway cover. So a lot of things like that at Bear Tavern really just kind of, you know, make these improvements are really going to make a difference to the school community.
And just, just another note on that, we, so folks know, especially our newer board members, that Bear Tavern is on its own water system.
Yeah.
And sewer system that filters into the public water systems, but that's something that we're looking to fix to avoid the problem that we had at Timberlane. That is on its own well, and we're looking at doing a sister well with it so that we don't ever run into the situation where we don't have any water at those schools.
Yep. And also the sewer pumping station, make some improvements to that so we can have that reliability as well. Right, so that's Bear Tavern. Here's the addition area in blue, you can see behind Bear Tavern, and that's where the addition is proposed to go. The area where the modulars are located will be used, as we said, will be preserved and used for district offices, administrative functions and things like that, non-school, non-student facing areas, okay? So that's the Bear Tavern Expansion Project. Bob, next slide will show just kind of what the floor plan looks like. And there's those 10 classrooms, some divisible, flexible spaces, moving the district child study team suite into that addition as well. And those offices are now located in the modulars. This building will also be prepared to receive a potential second floor if the space is needed later on, and kind of see dashed in what would be proposed with that. So this is the expansion plan for Bear Tavern.
So.
So if you go back to the previous slide, just wanted to clarify one thing here, right? We're not replacing, so the additional space that's going in there, right, does not eliminate the need for the modular buildings. It does allow us to use the modular buildings in a way that doesn't impact the students, but we still are going to need that space. We're still going to be continuing to take advantage of those buildings.
The areas have been maintained. The issues that we have there are that they're outside the building proper, and security and safety issues, we no longer wish to use those. They also very difficult to keep heated and cooled in extreme, in the extreme conditions we're now experiencing. But we also have a lack of storage space and other meeting space within the district, and these provide great spaces for that.
The point I'm trying to make is, with the, even given the current population of kids in BT, but certainly with the anticipated influx of kids into BT, right, we absolutely need that space. It's not a convenience thing that we're trying to move kids into nicer classrooms. We need that space.
And the district has invested in those buildings. They have made improvements to the siding and to replacing the HVAC. So they're serviceable for offices and other district functions like that, certainly. They've been maintained. Okay. So here's Hopewell Elementary School, again, building integrity, not too much here, mostly shingle roof. Again, you can see environmental improvements, HVAC, about 8.4 million dollars. Safety and security, space for students, 416,000. That is new enlarged toilet rooms for the kindergarten classrooms, and no site improvements there. Here's Hopewell, and this is basically what's planned, shingle roofs, as we said, and some of the HVAC work that's being planned as well, and then enlarging the toilet rooms for the kindergarten rooms in the primary wing. So that's Hopewell, just about 9.6 million dollars, almost. Here's Stony Brook, not as much of an expenditure here, but there's still some things, building integrity things have to be addressed, some of the roofing, the rising wall, masonry needs to be addressed, HVAC, there are some HVAC issues to address there, that those systems are. That school, of course, is more than 20 years old. Safety and security, we're in pretty good shape, space for students, we're good, and some minor site improvements. So for just about 3.3 million dollars, there's the roof replacement, you can see, going to correct the drainage issue, and we're going to replace two cafeteria rooftop units and add a chiller to Stony Brook Elementary School. And why is that? That's to give us that resiliency, because you have a geothermal system there. We want to make sure that we're going to be able to take care of any issues that could arise out of the geothermal system, okay? Oh, life safety, yes. Fire alarm system replacement is going, right, is in design right now to be done. That system needs-
Again, most folks think of Stony Brook as our newest facility, but at this point now, it's 22 years old.
Right. Yep. So Tollgate, building integrity, about 882,000. You can see indoor environmental improvements, HVAC, almost 2.2. Safety and security, just over 500. Space for students, again, addition here at, proposed at Tollgate Elementary School, and site improvements. You can see together, those things are just about 9 million dollars. And so here you go with the capital, you know, rehabilitation projects. You can see the roofing here, third grade, third floor, HVAC improvements are being done. That is an area that was not addressed yet. Replacing the electrical switch gear, that needs to be taken care of as well. We also have to do a little upgrade for the addition. Demolition of the modular buildings and construction of a new sixth classroom addition, and site improvements and driveway improvements, additional parking, which everyone will be happy about, as well as some pavement restoration. So that's Tollgate. There's the addition, the location, the area. We're talking about doing, building an access road around it as well, and then removing the modular buildings, a driveway, putting additional playground space back there, doing a secure courtyard area. You can see on the bottom of the slide, that's the proposed parking. Those modular buildings won't be there, so we'll be able to put some parking there.
Again, what's driving the new addition at Tollgate is the expansion of preschool, but also wanting to get, for safety and security reasons, to get the kids that are in the trailers inside the building, which also frees up areas for additional parking that's so taxing at that facility, which would also give access to emergency and fire companies the ability to drive around the building, which they don't have right now. That was something that they had been requesting for a long time. But again, the large part of the addition is getting, and some of our youngest students in the buildings, inside the buildings.
So there's the Tollgate Elementary School addition. There will be additional faculty toilet rooms added to this as well, as a faculty room that will be relocated to a more convenient location, faculty workroom. And there's those pre-K classrooms. So this will be able to provide, you know, the needed pre-K classrooms for the school district programs, okay? So that's pretty much all of the projects. This is just a summary of the costs. Bottom line, 87.5 million. Here are the projects broken out into what we call the rehabilitation projects, which are the projects that really don't involve construction of buildings or renovations. Those are the boilers and the roofs and the HVAC projects and all of those. So you can see how they're broken out, school by school, and you can see the total for each school and the grand total at 87.5 million. Next one. And then you can see the categories here, broken out by expenditures of costs and percentages. Building integrity, about 14.3 percent. Indoor environmental improvements in HVAC, almost 41 percent. Safety and security, relatively small amount because we did a lot of stuff already in the last referendum. And space for students, 31.7 percent, and site improvements, 11.8 percent. So 87.5 million. An estimate here, this percentage of eligible costs and state share, these are projections. We really won't know what those numbers are until we get our DOE approval letters, but this is an estimate. You can see that we expect about 66 percent of the projects that we are submitting to be eligible for state support, which means the state will pay a portion of the cost. We expect the state share overall to be about 26 percent of the cost of the referendum, and the state, the local share, rather, to be about 74 percent. So 26 percent of the cost of referendum will be paid for by the state.
We do, just for board members and community understanding, the district must bond the entire amount. The money from the state is paid annually as debt service relief, so they'll pay a portion of our debt service related to the eligible projects each year at budget time.
So, projection of the cost per household, 500 to 575 dollars a year. There are some caveats. This is not a final number. It's based on a 20-year bond term, and there's still some things that have to be done in planning for the financials and so forth. The impact will vary based upon the municipality, assumes that assessed values of the homes will remain stable, and average home values, of course, value vary by town. Interest rates, we hope, remain stable, may even go down a little bit, and that the state will pay that minimum 20 percent. And as we saw in the earlier slide, it looks like it's going to be more like 26 percent of the eligible costs of the referendum overall costs.
Right. It's important to say that the estimated cost to the households is very much an estimate. The numbers will change annually based upon the value of the ratables in each town and the cost of each home. The interest rates also have a factor. But what we're looking to do is, in a project of this nature, rebonding several different bond issues to delay the amount of the impact to the taxpayer. We don't need all the money upfront. We would never bond that much money in one shot, but maybe two or three bond issues based upon the need for the money. And hopefully that we would see interest rates drop during the period of time when we're going to be going out for bid on these numbers.
So just moving forward, next steps. I'm not going to spend a lot of time here. Basically, we have to finalize the referendum project list. We're very, very close now. Submission of other projects to the Department of Education, which is just for review of the projects, will take place basically right now. And then the final determination of the question and what is going to be asked for from the taxpayers will be determined in June or July of 2024, after we receive our Department of Education approvals. You know, there'll be an engagement and education process, of course, and a referendum vote in September of 2024, okay? So just some details of the timeline below. We've already, as you can see, we've got things well underway. Something's done. We've already got our long-range plan amendment approved. We had submitted that some time ago, actually, and we've already got that approved. So, anyway, that's the timeline. And then, Bob, just final slide, more to follow. Thank you.
Questions from the board? Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our public comment. So members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched for district, by district administration. Public comments are now open.
Just a reminder before we start, for anyone who's new, at 2 and 1/2 minutes, I will put up yellow, and at 3, I'll put up red.
Thank you. So I want to address the board about the referendum. Most of us realize that at some point-
Sorry, can you-
Yep. Christine Rule from Hopewell Township. "Most of us realize that at some point we're going to have to make repairs to our homes, and we set money aside for maintenance. $87.5 million is a huge ask for the small community, who is still in the process of paying for the last $35 million referendum that was passed in 2015. Projects were delayed back then, so you have known for the last nine years that some of these renovations would be necessary. Why wasn't money set aside in the budget? To put this all into perspective, Princeton recently passed a $13 million referendum, and Robbinsville tried unsuccessfully to pass a $4 million referendum, both well below the nearly $90 million you are asking us. This is our taxpayer money you are playing with. It's not monopoly money. Why is adding the turf fields to Timberland on the list of projects when you said that the middle school sports may need to be cut if you're unable to meet budget requirements? Also, my son has played soccer on those fields for the past two years, and they seem to be in good shape to me. Can you please provide some insight as to why this is necessary? Perhaps maybe a sports fundraiser would be a better compromise. My son played games on many other fields at many other schools, and they seem to be in comparable shape to ours. For the past two years, the people running for the Hopewell Township Committee have campaigned and won on the fact that they've lowered property taxes. I have an article where they stated that the new housing developments will not impact our school enrollment, and that we have plenty of space for new, any new projected students. You are asking us to pay even more in taxes than we already do, and the township has not committed to allocating any portion of the pilot money they receive for these new housing projects, even though their own website says that this money will allow them to make voluntary contributions to the school district. Has anyone from the district had a discussion with them? It is also very curious that this referendum was presented to us at the November 13th board meeting, not even one week after the election, where voters could have had the opportunity to ask the people running about enrollment and the pilot funds before they voted. I've said this before, we need more balance on this board and on our town committees. We currently have no checks and balances in place, which are so important to our constitutional republic form of government. Lastly, I would like to know how much the September 24th special election will cost taxpayers, and who is paying for that, the township or the school district? Is there some reason why this election is being held in September when the general election is just 42 short days later? Moving the referendum question to the November ballot will save taxpayer money. Princeton and Robbinsville did it that way. Why are we holding this special election? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lucas Wittenberg. I live at 327 Bird Street in Pennington, New Jersey. Last summer, I spoke at a board meeting where I summarized the current scientific literature evaluating the efficacy of random drug testing in Hopewell Valley Central High School, which showed that not only is random drug testing ineffective, it also has the capacity to increase drug misuse in schools. I also outlined risks associated with random drug testing, including a correlation with increased use of future drug use and poor attitudes toward school, alongside false positives and negatives. If the board would like me to present these sources again, please let me know, and I'll provide an updated, comprehensive summary of those claims and a review of their journal citations. Given that many leading U.S. advocacy organizations oppose random drug testing in schools, including but not limited to the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Education Association, the American Public Health Association, and the Drug Policy Alliance, alongside the American Civil Liberties Union, I believe the evidence against random drug testing in schools and the harm it poses to our students to be very clear. When the board last discussed random drug testing at Hopewell, it instituted some minor reforms, which I believe were a step in the right direction. However, I nonetheless maintain that, in the face of this evidence, our community needs to abolish random drug testing and reinvest the funds allocated to it of at least $10,000 every year into harm reduction, expanded counseling programs, distribution of naloxone nasal spray, or other evidence-based drug policies. As such, I would like to ask the board whether all board members currently support the abolition of random drug testing for the 2024 to 2025 school year, if not sooner. If so, when can we expect policy changes? Can the board provide or estimate a timeline? And if not, what reputable data is there to support maintaining the current policy in the face of this evidence? If such data exists, can the board make it available to the public? I believe it's our civic duty to ensure these policies, which undoubtedly have a large impact on drug misuse in our district and by extension, our students, are substantiated by reputable scientific evidence. And in that respect, I hope we can reform our current policies in the interest of our students. Thank you for your time, and please let me know if you'd like me to repeat any of my inquiries.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kate Hamm, Hopewell Township. As I came in on the tail end of the work session today, I'd like to ask if the budget slides that were presented, as well as the updated referendum slides in the presentation, could be linked to the agenda, or if they'll be posted in an accessible location on the district's website. While the superintendent provided some information at January's board meeting regarding the district's school days and e-learning days, additional was learned after. It was pointed out in the slides that the board policy states that the students here will attend 182 days of instruction. The additional days, 181 and 182, were titled e-learning days around 2017. Through community discussion, it was speculated that a former board member initiated the increase of instructional days, thus a change in board policy. I have learned since that it was the late 1980s, or maybe even earlier, was when the requirement for students to attend 182 instructional days began. While the current community remains perplexed and confused, it has yet to be shared the data which shows the benefit for the increase of the two additional days. We can all agree that life in the 80s looks vastly different from the world we live in and raise our children in now. The state mandates 180 days in public schools, with everything that we have learned about our teens, their development considerations to support mental health and social emotional well-being. The additional two days ignite the longtime discussion about school start time, where studies have shown and taught us about teen development, as well as support the concerns outlined to end school earlier. The additional two days are not make or break students when it comes to being accepted at Ivy League schools. These two additional days are delaying the ability for our students to enter post-school life, join the military, enter the workforce, or prepare for higher education, as was evidenced in the presentation earlier this evening. By keeping these additional two days and labeling them as e-learning days, the board is then contradicting the district's digital wellness initiative while burdening students with additional workload, as well as contradicting the results from the survey, where the majority wanted to end the school year earlier. The remark that 70 percent of respondents indicated no concern with early release days, since you're unable to itemize the responses by grade level, these responses could be skewed. The district partners with an organization to provide childcare at cost for elementary- students on these days. It would be nice for something equitable to be available for secondary students. In addition, students with special needs and students receiving free and reduced lunch are left without on these early release days. While the presentation noted early release days amongst other districts, it should also be noted that early release days, which are not indicated there, happen here at the high school for special testing and other special schedules. Lastly, I'd like to inquire about how individuals were chosen for the calendar committee. Other district-wide committees have allowed stakeholders to indicate their interest through a Google Doc, however, this one was not. Thank you.
Just order some of our responses. Hold on.
So the presentations will be posted shortly after the meeting. We just didn't get to them. They were being worked on right up into the meeting today.
Yeah, we're going to post them.
I mean, I can't argue, or I don't really understand why certain districts do referendums when they do. I know Princeton did one, and they're doing another one for, I think, bigger than ours. I don't know if George left, but George is working on the Princeton one, but I think their next referendum is going to be about $130 million.
It is.
So they are doing one right after the one they just did. We did, I mean, I don't know if you saw the slide that was up there, but we do try to pick off as many projects as we can. We do have a savings account, it's called the Capital Reserve, but it doesn't have the ability to cover the breadth and depth of the projects that we have. We can only deposit monies into the Capital Reserve through savings that we generate through each budget year. We could make a sizable deposit into the Capital Reserve at budget time, but we're limited by a 2% cap. So any deposit at the Capital Reserve is monies that would be removed directly from our general operating budget. The state used to allow districts to put money aside each year for capital projects and get a cap waiver for it, but they took that out of the budgeting process probably 15 years ago. So you don't have that mechanism anymore. So there really isn't that way to save that kind of money to prepare for this. As we talked about in the presentation, we picked off the things that we could pick off on an annual basis. The state does provide payment, but only if you do a referendum. So if you were to put money into your general budget on an annual basis, you'd be paying 100% of the cost, as opposed to up to 40% paid for by the state by going to a referendum or a rods project, which we are, we got rods projects, we're going to be doing those next summer, but they didn't approve all of our rods projects. We submitted probably $20 million worth of rods grant projects, and they approved probably just over $1,000,200 in projects. So the state didn't cover those to be done on an annual basis. We did not want to come to the board with an $87 million request. I'm going to throw my two finance committee members under the bus. They directed us to ask for more projects...
Okay.
...to make sure that we're addressing those kinds of things. So again, we...
Yes, yes. Absolutely, absolutely.
Right now, I'm not happy to talk. Do you want me to talk right now? But no, I'll just, I'll echo the sentiment that Alex had. I was extremely vocal to attempt to paint a picture that I think the community needs to hear about as to the state that we're in. It's up to the community to vote on that, but I have taken to heart the conversations around transparency and things of that nature, as has the administration. And for me, sitting on the finance committee, this was an opportunity for us to kind of lay it out to everybody and say, here's the reality that we're in. As Bob alluded to, we don't have the ability to do $87 million worth of projects because we are limited as a community by the state as to how we can save our money. So this isn't just a, we want to have all this money to do it. Bob and team is going to find a way over a long period of time to put this plan in place for us to execute these jobs in the most cost-conscious way possible. I don't think that, and as I am just kind of talking out loud here, I don't think that we, as a community, are thinking about the amount of money in a way that I would hope that we should, and how I wanted to encourage Bob and his team to put it out there. The idea of putting it in front of everybody was to say, here's the reality that we face. We can look at it in one of two ways. We either look back and go, why did this happen? And there's a time for that. But there's also a time where we have to act. And the best way to act is with the most amount of information, and then ultimately we in the community vote on it. Right? So I will proudly carry the flag of somebody who said, we need to put all the information in front of the public, which, by the way, I'm also very much like Alex, a believer in not spending a lot of money and being cost-conscious about how we think about doing things. So to me, there's going to be a lot of conversations about this over the course of the next X amount of months, and I hope that the community comes out and talks about it. I personally have learned a lot in the past year about the things that we really have no control over when it comes to our budget. And I would encourage the community, if we want to get control over those things, to go higher levels of government to figure that out, because at our level, we are limited. So I think that's the best way I can put it.
And if I...
Oh, sorry.
Alex, did you want to go? Go first.
Yeah. I think, Mark, you touched on the thing that I wanted to add, right? I look at things as, what do I have control over? And what can I, and how can I fix the situation? And it's not just here, right, in my own life. How can I fix the situation with the tools that I have available to me? Separately from, how did I get myself into the mess that I'm in? Right? And I want to encourage people to think about those two things separately. You know, why we're going to have a, why we're anticipating a demographic increase, why school budgeting is done the way it needs to be done. I think a very important question, but it's not something that I can do anything about as a board member. What I can do something about is look at the future, given the data that's in front of me, and say, where are we going to be? And when I look at this referendum, we, I think, Mark alluded to this, we as a community don't have to pass a referendum. But if we don't, chances are, our kids are going to be in much bigger classrooms, there is going to be an uncomfortably large number of days where they're going to come to school, and they're going to be told, no, you're not going to your classroom today, you're learning in the gym with six other classes in the gym, because your classrooms are unusable and are going to be unusable for the next couple of weeks. And that's how, what the essence of this referendum is to me. My recommendation is to spend the money so that we don't find ourselves in that situation, right? But ultimately, I second Mark's point, is that we are putting this out there in front of you folks, and if you decide as a community that you don't want to spend the money and take the chance of significantly impacting the way we educate our kids in a negative way, that's a choice that the community has. I wish I had, I wish I had an option seat. I really do. I do not see a way to, for us to create an option seat, given where we are and given the things that we, as the Board of Education, can control. There are other things that we cannot control, which may come and help us, and that would be awesome.
Alex, you stole some of my thunder, so thank you. But one of the things I was going to say, we're in this position where you're looking at $87 million, and that's all of it, right? Is because, over the years, the board, my team and Dr. Smith's team before me, we're listening to the public, and we, you know, we came in as heroes, and we got, everybody got five cents off their taxes, and it literally sometimes was in the cents, but we didn't go up, we stayed flat. Poor Tom Quinn has been flat all this time. Life is not flat. Things cost more year after year after year, and we maintain our class size. We maintain all these things that we want, and the community demands of us to have. That costs money, salaries, benefits, all those things to maintain that beautiful class size, and that makes it very hard for us to generate revenue to fix things that are failing. Yes, we do plan for things for our house, and sometimes we don't plan. Sometimes things just break. So, you know, I wish I could plan for everything that goes wrong with my house. Every time I think I'm two steps ahead, three things fall off, right? And then I have a set amount of money that's coming in, and that's it, that I can generate. So that's where we are. Listen, we can keep playing this game, you know, with where we pretend like these things aren't going to fail, and you don't fix the roofs over your pack, and now water's coming in and pouring on equipment, or carpets, or mold. We have it over our gym, we have it in your kids' classrooms, we have heat that fails, we have air conditioning that fails, I have to close schools. We know we can't get equipment in for a long period of time. Whatever the township may be saying in their meetings, we all paid for a demographer report, they helped pay for, that says we are going to have unseated, unhoused students in Bear Tavern. They have that report, just like everyone else did. We've been talking about this referendum since before the elections. Before the elections, that same slide deck's been up there, and we've been tweaking it along the way, based on feedback, based on questions coming here, sending out. Trip was here to talk about the turf field and why that's a recommendation that it's in there. So we've been talking about this, because this has been something that's been going on since I have been here for 10 years, and it's, we can keep playing the game, but it's going to come back and bite us at some point. And just like folks are saying, well, why did we take that stuff out the referendum last time? Because people yelled, we took it out, now it's three times the cost. So that's, this is our recommendation, because we don't, just like when Tana talked about those calendars and the time that was spent on that, we don't knee-jerk and make decisions just because, this isn't easy to come and ask you for this. But I don't feel like, you know, because I'll be off on the beach somewhere in a few years, I'm older than I look, you know? I don't want to leave you all in this position for the next superintendent or the next person that comes in. We'll be all long gone, and then this stuff is going to come, chickens are going to come home to roost. There already are. So I just, you know, and these folks have been challenging us the whole way. This isn't something they came to easily. But that's why we're bringing this before you. Bob, I wanted you to answer the question about the special election. Also, though, was asked, because I think we covered almost everything beyond this last piece, is I can't make the township do anything. We don't run the township, so I can't go to them and say, and demand them to do anything. We are in conversations with them, we are setting up another meeting, we've met with them already, all the mayors, and we will continue to talk and hopefully collaborate on that. But again, we can't, we don't manage the township, nor can we make them participate in this.
The last time we did a referendum, I believe the cost was $30,000 in September of 2015. We made a decision, Dr. Treese and I, with the board and with, yeah, the board, to move to keep the election in September, to keep it away from the general election, because we wanted folks to come out to vote for our projects and not have a knee-jerk reaction to vote down our referendum at a very highly contested presidential election that's expected. Many schools do this. September is a very standard time, September. Actually, in December, are standard times for schools to do elections, because it separates itself from partisan politics, which, and we are not a partisan organization.
I have one more thing I want to say. I do want to say thank you guys for coming out here and asking us these questions, because God help, this community, the board, and the administration don't have the answers.
So I think I covered everything there, but if not, I'm sure it'll come back in the second public comment. Mr. Wittenberg, your question about the random drug testing, yes, we are heavily involved in conversations about that. We're closer than you think, but we generally try not to change discipline policies and all that right in the middle of the school year, and we're contracted with folks until the end of the school year, but we're closer than you think. So thank you, and we love your feedback, and we love you keep reminding us to stay on top of this. So thank you so much. And then finally, Ms. Hamm, again, we have 182 school year, yes, we do, for instruction. It's shorter than some other districts, we've done some research on. However, the e-learning days were a way for us to, if we had snow days, not to extend the school year. Again, the vision was that at some point, we would go completely online, which we found during COVID wasn't as fun as we thought, right? But it is something that I do recognize that we don't want kids tied to a device. K-25 isn't, they don't have devices at home anyway, so they don't have devices on e-learning days to begin with. Teachers send home packets for emergency snow day assignments. But we are exploring in committee opportunities for us to maintain that, so we don't have to extend the school year, and do something more SEL-related, where kids are not on their computer, working with the Digital Wellness Committee, with our counselors to design sort of a choice board of things that they can do, where they're taking, they're doing mindful things for the day, or things to take care of themselves, or SEL. So say we go to 180 days. What that means is, when you have a traditional snow day, there are no other days to play with. Yes, you don't have to do anything on that day, but then you also lose a day. So the districts that are 180 days have taken those days from spring break, and they're making, and some of them, yes, they have, because they have to make up the days. If you're out and absent, and there's no school, and you've gone under the 180 days required by the state, then you have to make them up, right? So that means you take them from spring break, or you add them to the end of the school year. That's what they have to do. So unless they have snow days built in that are fake days, and then they just kind of take them away at the end of the year, and those sorts of things. But many of the districts around us are making up days by taking them from other places already. That's what's happening. I do talk to the other superintendents a lot. So that's, you can do that, but then when you close, you have to make them up. So I don't see taking them away. Yes, things have changed for kids, things have gotten harder for children, and they haven't gotten easier since the 80s. So why we are stepping backwards, I don't know why. I wouldn't recommend that for the district. And our e-learning days are things that people are modeling even across the bridge. They're starting to do days that are called flex instructional days, and all these other things, which are virtual days. Some are doing just straight virtual days. If you watch the school closures, you see them pop up. That's them doing what Hopewell's been doing for years now. So I don't see the need to go backwards. I think we can tweak these and make them work in a way that aren't stressful for kids or parents. But, you know, again, I got lots of emails from the kids when we had weather pending, because they like to tell me and help me decide if it's going to be a snow day. They always tell me that we should have them. I did not hear from one kid that they were stressed with their work, and that it was a lot for the e-learning days. And believe me, if it was, I would hear about it. Our kids have no problem telling me when they don't like something. But I do think we can adjust it where it doesn't need to be, and there is, I did hear that there is a disparity, like if you're taking AP classes and honors classes, that things are getting a little too aggressive. I think if we just make those e-learning days something that is manageable and really about you doing, because learning can also be, how do I take care of myself, SEL, and getting outside, right? Those can also be part of it. So I think if we make that adjustment, the stress that comes for parents to try to manage kids, are they supposed to be on the computer? Should they be doing this? We can take that away, and we can make that easier for parents and students, and our staff, quite frankly, that have to run around and kind of make sure that these assignments get done after the fact. So I don't think we have to throw the baby out with the bathwater to accomplish all of those things and still maintain the integrity of the program, programming that we're proud of, I think. So I think I covered all the questions, that I forget anything. Madam President?
I think we got everything. And I just wanted to underscore that the board is, had a couple of conversations casually around the 182. Nobody's attached to them. However, if you look at the information that was provided by the calendar committee, going longer as a school district is not favored. So what is favored is knowing what days to manage as your family, as your, what days do you need to provide support for your kids. So having those days built in holds us stable, except for extreme cases beyond 182 days, or beyond the two days, excuse me, of extreme weather or something else. So it's not taken casually, it's taken into account a lot... So it's, it's not taken casually, it's taken into account a lot of the feedback in the surveys, but there is no one here attached to 182. It is really balancing a lot of different requirements. That brings us to staying where we are with 182. So.
I can also just add two quick things. I feel like I have a unique perspective on this board, being a former student who was in the district less than three years ago. From my personal experience, and I can also speak on behalf of all of my now formally graduated classmates, those e-learning days, I don't want to invalidate any individual students' experiences, but they, they were not incredibly stressful and strenuous academic days. I was involved in a host of AP classes when I was in high school, I took pretty rigorous schedules. And I can tell you those, those online virtual days were not necessarily in comparison in the workload in terms of a full day in person. And then Mr. Goodwin, I just want to acknowledge your speech, and I'm not going to put anyone else on the spot, but I ran on a platform that included reforming the drug policy we have here in Hopewell. So I'm particularly supportive of the abolition of the random drug testing policy and I'm looking forward to helping out and parse out that policy.
Anyone else going once? Wonderful. Thank you all for the active discussion. It's much appreciated and we hope that it continues as we move through the year. With that, I'm going to close our comments section and we're going to move on, just do a quick check on any old business items. Seeing none, we'll move on to, I need a first and second to approve the consent items that are asterisked on the.
First, I mean motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Consent agenda items are passed. All right, we're going to go ahead and move into our different committee updates. So with that, I'm going to touch base with finance, although we've spent a great deal of time on it.
So I'm not going to talk about the referendum and the budget. We, we talked enough about that. I will open with good news. January's committee was, meeting was the first one that I've participated in in a year and a half when Tom came in and he had no major unpleasant surprises.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing seemed, or nothing large seemed to have broken in the one month since the previous. Yes. So, so that was, create some updates on the ongoing work. The issue with water quality in Bear Tavern is resolved as of the committee meeting, it was not officially resolved, it was only resolved in fact, we were waiting for some approvals, I don't know if we have them or not, but we have them, good. And we received word from the state that we're good to go for the grant to cover HVAC work at the central high school. This is going to cover 40% of what the state thinks it should cost. So my explanation for it is, it's like when you, if you have insurance, medical insurance and you go out of network, there's the bill that you get charged, there's the, what your insurance thinks that they should charge, right? So it's 40.
40%?
Yeah, it's 40, but not of the actual cost, but it's still money that we can use. So we're going through the process. It's pretty significant work, so Tom's plan is do the engineering this summer and then get the work done during the summer of 2025. And the HVAC work at Hopewell Elementary is progressing well, assuming the chiller actually does arrive, when it's supposed to arrive, we should have it installed and working by late April and ready to go for May. So it's close, but we should be okay there. And that, I think, is all I have in my notes.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we will move on to personnel and.
Good, okay, yeah. Hi, can you hear me?
Sorry, I'm sorry. You should be looking over at Tanner.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so Personnel Committee, we met this afternoon, John Slotman, new board member joined, thank you, welcome aboard. Couple of things that we talked about that we're going to be talking about tonight. First and foremost, want to talk about the retirement, 30 years of Melissa Sis from Timberland. Very excited to congratulate her on her retirement, 30 years in the district is a big deal. We talked a little bit about some of the appointments of some of our long-term subs. You're going to see on the agenda, on the, as you're looking at it, that we talked a little bit about some of the continuing education for some of our staff members, great work by that, and they're getting their well-deserved next steps. We talked a little bit too about the continued growth of substitutes continuing to be coming into the district, which is a good thing, that's an issue in other districts. A lot of that's coming from folks retiring from other, excuse me, from other careers, which is always great. One of the things that we will, you will see as well on the agenda is around some of the new JDs that Tanner referred to earlier in the evening. A lot of these new JDs had to be updated because many of them are 10, 20-plus years old and we had to just keep up with the times. A lot of this is around current staff reassignment, doesn't need necessarily mean that we're going to be hiring additional staff and specifically on the agenda, you'll see, there is a chief technology security officer job that we are putting out there, but we are not trying to fill it out this time. Last two quick items, we just did a quick overview for John and some of the new members on the tenure process and then, as you'll see on the agenda, talk a little bit about the CBA. I think that's about it.
So we need a first and second to approve all of those amazing announcements?
Second.
Wonderful, can I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Genovacy.
Yes.
Mr. Kapadia.
Yes.
Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yep.
Mr. Slotman.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to policy.
Okay, so the Policy Committee met on Wednesday, February 7th. You likely saw in your review of the agenda that we have two policies and regulations related to staff attendance up for first reading. We're actually going to postpone that until the March meeting and I'll, I'll give a little bit of background on that. But we also have two policies up for a second reading today that we reviewed at the last meeting. So just a little background related to the attendance policies and regulations 3212 and 4212. So for context here, a new law was signed into place July 2023, so this summer, and it went into effect immediately. And it amended previous laws addressing the requirements around sick leave among school district employees. So the law essentially expands the allowable uses of sick leave, including the reasons for taking sick leave and also who it can be taken for. So for example, instead of taking sick leave only for personal illness or injury, it can now be taken for care of family members. It also allows sick leave for reasons like the closure of a child's place of care or school due to a state of emergency. So it does allow for the board to require certification, reasonable documentation and advance notice of sick leave requests were practical. So our school district has been implementing this in alignment with the law since this summer, with oversight from Ms. Smith as well as the guidance of our board attorney. However, our policies and regulations now also need to be updated to align with this new law. So what you saw up here, that we're postponing until next month to get more clarity around from our board attorney, and also what you'll see in next month's agenda for first reading are a number of policies that relate specifically to aligning our policies and regulations with the new sick leave law. So just giving you some background on that. Any questions about that? So can I have a motion and a second to move policies 0131 and 2270 up for second reading?
Okay, thanks.
So you've seen these policies before. So first we have policy 0131, bylaws, policies and regulations, and you can see our revisions here in the agenda. So just as a reminder here, the purpose of this policy is to assist the Board of Education in bylaw, policy and regulation management. The last revision to this policy was made in April 2009 and the current revisions that you see here seek primarily to better align the policy language with current practice. So in particular, the policy now references and defines the term regulations because school boards are required by statute and administrative code to adopt certain regulations. The revisions allow for distribution of policy online through board docs as opposed to a paper manual. And language was also added indicating that the board does welcome feedback on policies and/or regulations from members of the school community. The proposed revisions do provide an option that we reviewed at the last meeting for the board to abolish a bylaw, policy or regulation in one meeting. The committee did not select this option. Instead, we're recommending that bylaws, policies and regulations be abolished at a board meeting only when the proposed abolishment has been approved by the board at a previous meeting. So this will ensure that the board always has at least one month of advance notice for input and discussion when we're proposing a bylaw, policy or regulation for abolishment. I do want to note, and Mr. Colavita brought this up last time, that the policy does provide that policies, bylaws or regulations can be adopted, revised or abolished without prior notice under certain emergency circumstances. We received no revisions from the board to this policy during or after our first reading.
Pam, I just want to note. Please. It was originally adopted in 2009, it was revised in 2021, just to be clear.
So we never adopted that revision. So that is a Strauss Esme revision. So what you see, so when we look at policies, we look at policies that are provided to us by Strauss Esme, who is a vendor. Sometimes when they provide us revisions, it's revisions to their revisions, but not our revisions. So when you look on board docs, we have the 2009 version, but what you're seeing with the revision below in the 2021, that's actually the Strauss Esme revision, which Bob was so kind as to explain to me because I had the same level of confusion when I compared it to the, what was in board docs. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, okay. But thank you for that question slash clarification.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions about that one? Okay. So next we have policy 2270, religion in the schools. We also received no additional revisions from the board to this policy during or after our first reading. But this proposed revisions to policy 2270 are in response to updated guidance from the U.S. Department of Education. The policy provides that students hold rights to prayer and religious expression in the school setting. And although public schools cannot promote or favor specific religions, right, they also cannot discriminate against private religion expression by students or staff. So the last revision to this policy was also made in April 2009. And the current revisions that you're looking at primarily update terminology in the policy, including changing the term religion to prayer and religious expression, and reference the U.S. Department of Education 2023 guidance as the resource on this subject, which effectively eliminates the need to revise policy 2270 every time there's a change in subsequent guidance released by the Department of Education. So I'll stop there. Any questions to this policy? Policy Committee, have I left anything out? Okay. All right.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yep.
Mr. Slotman.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Dr. Genovacy.
Yes.
Mr. Kapadia.
Yes.
Dr. Liliston.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Okay, moving on and back actually to edcom.
Wait, wait.
Oh, you didn't abolish. What?
Did she move the abolish too, at the same time? Move.
But.
We were posting.
I think it's postponed right to align the first reading.
So the first ones, the first one and the third one were postponed.
Yes.
Now we got.
Then we don't have anything. That's what I thought we were.
Bob, calendars.
No, we have edcom. We have to go back up.
Calendar says under policy.
But we skipped. We need to go back up.
No, no, not adoption of the calendars, not the discussion of the calendars.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, that calendar. Those calendars, not the other calendars.
All right, we're going to do a first and second on approving the district calendars. Motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Why are you cringing over there, Mark? Just checking in.
He's thinking.
Okay, okay. All right, Pat, the district calendars have passed. Now we will go back. Hello. You may proceed.
Thank you. So we met last Tuesday, the 13th, and Supervisor of ELA Media and TV Productions, Amy Baskin, discussed the new English standards and the need to begin exploring a new program. This is at the elementary level. She began the process to select high-quality literacy products. Some of the products that she looked at were aligning, she wanted to make sure that they aligned with the standards. They demonstrated clear intention to serve multilingual and special ed students. They helped students experience authors of diverse backgrounds, among others. She has explored eight different products and the district will be further exploring two of those eight that they, we felt they met their criteria, which are wit and wisdom and into reading. And so we'll be looking into this further this spring and fall. HVCHS social studies teachers, Mr. Newman and Ms. Silverman, develop lesson plans for a PBS film, Price of Silence, defining key learning objectives and student activities. The director of the film, Regly Hutchinson, a former central high school graduate, will put the lesson plans on his website for free access so more educators can leverage the great work from our district. Supervisor of Social Studies and Wellness, Darren Lewin, discussed his proposal of bringing in a new read aloud for fourth grade graders in social studies. And finally, one of Dr. Treese's goals for the year was to develop a consistent grading policy at the secondary level. I presented various data that we had collected throughout the year and presented four different options that the board could move forward with. Next steps include having department leaders coordinate to ensure that grading policies are consistent within departments. So important issues that were discussed include valuing both assessment performance and student's effort. The grading policy should stay away from penalizing students who demonstrate mastery while not meeting all homework assignments, and the grading policy should also reward students who have not met the performance level but have demonstrated great effort.
One thing I want to add, the two new programs that we're piloting, being cheap, I asked about the budget. We have existing tools that we use, which we would have had to renew and pay for anyway, and the administration feels they're not the greatest tools anymore, the programs that we're piloting. Both of them allow us to save substantial money by allowing us to continue to use the tools that we already have and work with, with that literature as opposed to having to buy a whole bunch of new books. So, you know, it's, from a budgetary point of view, it's a fairly good move.
Okay, anything else? Any questions? All right, moving on then to community relations. That completed the agenda. Yes. Excellent, and SEL.
We also had a lovely conversation on the calendar, but we also did some other things. We just, for future, we know that we have, sorry, my brain just stopped. Reset. We know that we have Character Strong being implemented in our schools right now for SEL, and we have been developing a collection of data and evidence.
the secondary schools that we'll be able to present to people later on in the spring. And then Paulette wanted to highlight some of the amazing things that we're doing around S E L in the district.
Thanks, Jackie. Just some recaps. Bear Tavern during the month of January had Great Kindness Challenge. Stony Brook did their weekly Character Strong lessons on Wednesday mornings. They had Spirit Day, Dress Like a Teacher Day and a character pep rally. Hopewell Elementary, they had a Super Bowl and they also had a Hopewell Hooray Program, recognizing students and staff who embody the core values of leadership, empathy, acceptance and perseverance. At Tollgate, they held, they actually still are holding mindfulness school-wide each Monday monthly meetings. They hold Gator Groups, creating a craft and holding discussions aligned to the monthly character trait in Character Strong. And then finally, at the high school, they had the ice hockey team honoring local veterans, leadership core students, welcoming the class of 2027, the athletes, supporting athletes through the Athletic Council and mental health awareness and social emotional well-being training for coaches at the high school. Oh, and Timber Lane, sorry. And at Timber Lane, they had Service Learning Project, St. Baldry's. They incorporate their Character Strong lessons weekly. They have a kindness club and they promote mindfulness during their daily video announcements. Thanks.
Complete, Jackie?
Yes.
Any questions from the board? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the calendars for February and March. So Anita first and second to approve the calendars.
No.
Okay. Who wants to go first?
Finance for March 11th, five o'clock. That works. Good.
What?
We have the strategic, we have strategic plan that night. Six? You could. Morning? Is the morning, first thing in the morning work better?
Yay, Alex. Dad yelled.
What's, eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock on March 11th. Will we be done?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So we can do the easy one. Personnel, you back to the board meeting night? Six o'clock, okay, six o'clock on March 18th. Six o'clock.
I am, what time? Yeah, it's gonna be weird to start like 4:10. Okay, okay.
March 14th at 4:10.
I'm on the road and I just arrived.
Seventeen?
Like 4:05. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Otherwise I'll just.
S E L?
So I have us on the 14th at 10, but I don't think the morning works for anybody anymore. So I was going to propose 4:30, but I think that was just taken. So is there another time that day? I'm fine with 3:30. Does that work? No? Okay.
I, so it either, if we're doing it that week, it either has to be before 9:45 or in between 11 and 3, or after 4:30.
What about the 13th? Would that be better for you, that Wednesday? Mike? The 13th at 3:30?
I'm in the car.
Oh, okay. 4:30?
4:30, yes.
Does 4:30 work for you, Pam? Does 4:30 work for you, Mike? Yes, the 13th at 4:30, the 13th. Anita? Okay. So the 13th, I'm gonna readjust it on our calendar, Bob, but it'll be 4:30 on the 13th.
Community?
Do you say put community relations on the 13th? That was so good for you.
Nope. Was that, you want to stack policy and community relations? Want to try that one?
Are folks available at 1:00 or 3:00? Three on the 12? I can also do like evening.
You might want to try it the week before because you're close to the board meeting. Usually you go a week before. Week.
I think it's fine on that day because policies are.
Okay, okay.
It's up to you. Usually you try to do it earlier in case you have to address something. Okay, so should we maybe, maybe we'll look at the week before? Can folks do the 7th? Can we do the 7th at 4:00? I have AC. Okay.
Spring break, you don't have AC, I don't think. Yeah.
And it's not, no, no, we're March.
Oh.
We have to come to full town with your cross section.
It's Penn State spring break.
Okay, 3:00. Can you do it then? 3:00 on the 7th?
March 7th, 3:00.
March 7th. Yeah. You do 2:30?
Sure.
John can do 2:30.
2:30, you want to stack community relations with that?
Well, I can, I can.
Seven. Seven.
I mean, it ends a whole lot because everyone's running.
Okay. So approve all of those, all of those. Blues and steam. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, moving on, any new business items? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our second public comment, which members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take up the matter at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment is now open.
Kate Hamm, Hopewell Township. In my first comment up here, I asked about how the calendar committee participants were recruited. Various other district-wide committees allow stakeholders to express interest. This one did not. My email to you all asked if this committee was a true, well-comprised cross-section of our community. Was it diverse in all areas of diversity? In response to the e-learning days, how is it equitable that pre-K to five does not complete e-learning because they don't have a device to complete it, but those secondary students are required since they have devices at home? Is it, it is possible to meet the needs for staff, students and families by eliminating e-learning. Revisiting Board Policy 8210 and amending the required instructional days to 180 while leaving those additional two days as built-in school closure days is a solution. We don't need to keep up with the neighboring districts, we need to do what is right for our community. It does not put us at a deficit. In fact, it puts us at an advantage with two less district-mandated instructional days and allows built-in days in the event for the need of closure, giving students and staff a classic school closure day, as you and I know. I believe I heard in some of the referendum, the need to address an increase in pre-K enrollment. Space is one thing, but a good quality program that meets the needs of all students, nurtures strengths and supports weaknesses will be an additional line item in the budget in future years. I'm seeing this firsthand in another district where a shiny diamond of providing universal pre-K looked great and it turns out to be a piece of coal when you look at all the necessary pieces that come into play. Consider thinking about that, which items need to be considered for elimination in future budgets. Once a month, the public is able to come before you to voice concerns and ask questions. It's very hard to complete thoughts, concerns and questions in a limited time. We're allotted three minutes per month to speak before you. I would ask that the policy committee consider looking at increasing this time to four minutes each. Lastly, the turf field discussion baffles me. We have brand-new tennis courts that our community is unable to access, though it was our tax dollars which revitalized them. We have D E I concerns throughout the district which are being addressed bit by bit instead of all at once. Some areas in the district do bare minimum to make ends meet when additional supports would enhance programming. It's time to check our priorities.
Hi, my name is Luke Swinberg. I live at 327 Bird Street, Pennington. I just wanted to say thank you for the response to my public comment, especially from Mr. Kapadia about advances in abolishing the random drug testing policy. And I appreciate and encourage any further consideration of the evidence or data surrounding reducing drug use in our school. So thank you very much.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none?
Well, there's two. One, all kids complete e-learning assignments. The K through five students don't use computers because they don't take them home. They take home paper copies of assignments. And then the other question was selection of the calendar committee. Ms. Smith, we missed that the first time, I knew we were missing something.
So members of the committee were chosen from the District Parent Council. These are representatives from each school and voted on by each school community. In addition, the survey allowed feedback provided by all survey respondents and so that feedback was used. So all parents and community members and those who received the survey were able to provide input.
Other question was diversity. There was a nice cross-section of all folks. We didn't have, you know, all stay-home moms or all folks that fit one phenotype and we made sure special education was represented, that sports parents were represented, that employees were represented. So we made sure we covered, covered all our bases there. In addition to making sure that we touched other committees to find out and get feedback. So it was very thorough work and I thank you again for that. And Ms. Hamm, there was a lot said after that and I think it was a lot just for the board to consider it and we will consider and discuss all the things that you brought in your second comment. So thank you for that. And Mr. Wittenberg, thank you for your comments as well.
Okay, with those responses, the second public comment is now closed and I need a first and second to move on to executive session. To, oh, excuse me, I need to be specific about, about what we're doing. Yeah, we will be discussing HIB matters as well as student matter and personnel matter seven, eight, two, five and action, no action will be taken. So first and second for.
Second?
All in favor?
You can hear me.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you all for joining us. We'll be moving, the board will be moving into public, or excuse me, executive session.